Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular business meeting for Tuesday, October 17th, 2023. Time right now is 7:00 PM. I'll ask that Clerk Wykoff come forward and call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present and establishing a quorum are Council members Vulture, Kenny Davis, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford's not here right now. I don't recall him saying that he would not be here this evening. Does anybody have a recollection of that? Okay, we will announce for the record when he enters chambers. Councilmember Scarborough, will you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you. Thank you. For seven, the agenda this evening is a public hearing. This is under item four, 4.1. So 2023-2024 budget revenue sources and Mayor's proposed 2023-2024 mid biennial budget adjustment. Mr. Pylund will be presenting on this. And as this is a legislative public hearing, I do have some things to read it. So before we proceed with the hearing, please note that the rules and procedures applied to this hearing are available in the agenda packet and on the city's website. To summarize, after the hearing is open, but city staff will present a staff report and council members may ask questions for clarification of staff or wait until another time. The public hearing is now open. For the record, I'm informing all parties interested in these proceedings that the city clerk has forwarded to the city council, all timely written or otherwise reportable comments that have been submitted regarding the subject matter of this public hearing. At this time, I'll ask that Greg Pylund, our finance manager, provide a description of the matter under consideration.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. So before you this evening is the public hearing number one for the 2324 revenue sources and the mayor's proposed 2324 mid biennial budget adjustment. Next slide, please, Jody. So the schedule for the proposed mid biennial budget adjustments is tonight's first public hearing. On the 24th, it will be the second public hearing. Also, on the 24th will be the first reading of the budget and property tax ordinances. Then on November 14th, we have the proposal for the adoption of the budget and property tax ordinances. Next slide, please. So first, starting off with property taxes, just a reminder that property taxes must be adopted on an annual basis. This is our second largest revenue source to the general fund, the first being sales tax. The preliminary new construction assessment came in actually at $61 million, which is significantly higher than what our budget had. Our budget for 2024 had 25 million in estimated new construction, so considerably higher than what we had for 2024. The implicit price deflator, or IPD, was 3.67 for the 2024 property tax. So what this means is a city over 10,000, we could take the 1% since the IPD was over 1%. However, the mayor's proposed mid biennial budget adjustment proposes a 0% increase for 2024. Next slide, please. Oh, Scott adjusted a little bit.
Well, it is an adjusted budget.
It is an adjusted budget.
An adjusted slide for an adjusted budget.
Yeah. So overall, the current levy is 3 million. This is probably why I print it. That's our 2023 budget for the current levy. With the new construction that we talked about, the 61 million in new construction that adds 52,931 to make our total 2024 proposed property taxes 4,017,021. With the 0% increase for 2024, we currently have 121,000 in bank capacity. Just something I thought that was kind of interesting when the preliminary assessment numbers came out for 2024. The city of Monroe, which a lot of people saw in 2023, an increase of up to 30%. For 2024, the increase for the city Monroe was only 0.16%. However, Snohomish County overall had a 2024 assessed value decrease of 3.63%. So what we're seeing is maybe not a significant increase in assessed value in the city of Monroe for 2024, but we are doing, we're actually one of only three cities within the county that actually had an increase as opposed to a decrease like Snohomish County overall did at 3.63%. Next slide, please. So this is just kind of a breakdown of what we look at typically, the dollar bill that we look at for, this is the Monroe portion of the 2023 tax bill, which is 11.54%. The city of Monroe receives 11.54% of every dollar collected in property taxes within our area. So that's 11.54 cents for every $1 in property tax collected. The remaining goes to other jurisdictions, as you can see, the state of Washington, which has the biggest piece of the dollar, the Monroe School District, Snohomish Regional Fire and Rescue, Snohomish County Snowwell Library, and the Public Hospital. Next slide, please. So one thing that we sent out to council last week and the mayor on Tuesday was an overview, a memo talking about the mid biennial budget adjustment proposed by the mayor. We also gave a breakdown of all of the requests that came from the different departments, including if those items were one time, if they were grant funded, or if they were ongoing. We also included a why now section in that memo that kind of talks about why now? Why is it included now in the mid biennial adjustment as opposed to included in the 2324 adjustment itself? Just to kind of reiterate that this process, the mid biennial budget adjustment, is truly just that. It's a simple adjustment. It really is a true up. When we have some new information that we'll talk about this evening, it really was just a true up and not a line by line budget amendment or budget, you know, brand new budget like we would typically do. It really was just a fairly simple adjustment to do some true up of some costs. Something to remind you of as well is the assumptions from the 2324 budget process did not change for the mayor's proposed 2324 mid biennial adjustment. So what council approved with the 2324 budget itself, the biennial budget, those same assumptions stayed true with the mid biennial adjustment. So one of the assumptions that we had that we had to work with was the June over June CPIU, Seattle Tacoma Bellevue was 4.6%. This impacts our collective bargaining agreements along with nonrepresented staff and the COLA that they would receive for the upcoming year. The Federal Reserve continues to raise interest rates. The current LGIP, our local government investment pool rate is 5.3%, which is, I think, historically high. It has been higher, but it's incredibly high right now. And so we wanted to take a look at all of our interest earnings, our different line items for interest in all the different funds and make sure that we were accurately reflecting what we anticipated revenue coming in. And then the utility rate increase per resolution number 0222019, as the water increased by 3% in 2024. Stormwater increased by 10%, which is down from 12.5% in '22. And then sewer zero increase for 2024. So actually, just recently in July, we had the budget amendment that Becky brought forth to you, and you might notice that the budget amendment for all funds was $208 million. And so we're actually down a little bit with this mayor's proposed mid biennial budget adjustment to 204 million. Really, the reason for that is largely due to the fact that we're no longer going to be seeking $8 million in revenue bonds for the sewer CIP projects, which is the Bio Solids dryer in 2024. Instead, we're going to stay with, we're continuing to do the design phase throughout 2024. So it's currently in design now and it'll remain in design throughout 2024. So no need to take out those bonds. And so therefore, the budget has been adjusted downward. The targeted ending fund balance for all funds is just over 45 million. One thing that the mayor's proposed mid biennial budget adjustment does have is it does make sure that all reserves are fully funded. That's across all different funds that we have reserves in, and it is a fully balanced mid biennial budget. The general fund budget overall is just over 49 million, and the targeted general fund ending fund balance is 3.5 million. So now, just looking on the revenue side, once again, we already talked about this, but I think it's important enough to reiterate that all reserves are fully funded. We needed to make sure that we were looking at the reserve calculation based on new assessed value and also a true up of expenses. And so we've done that process and ensured that all reserves are fully funded. We did review large revenue sources such as sales tax, property tax, and we also looked at utility revenue to align with the updated six-year CFP that you'll be hearing about more later on this evening. And then we talked about the incredibly high interest rate right now that we have with our short-term interest. We did a trip of all the interest earnings across all funds based on current and what the protected future short-term interest rates could be. Next slide, please. So looking at the expenditure side, one of the things that we had to adjust rather significantly was liability insurance costs. So we get our insurance through Washington City's Insurance Authority. And in 2024, they provided us notification that our overall insurance cost was going to raise 22%. So for that, what that means was it was just over $1 million in '23 costs for insurance, and it's going to be 1.231 million in '24 for insurance. So one of the things we had to make sure that we adjusted, we talked a little bit earlier about salary and benefits adjustments based on the CPIU of 4.6 and then the estimated benefit cost. Council has adopted those assumptions that we talked about earlier. We did use 10%, but now we have some greater information on the benefit costs where we can adjust that downward. And we reviewed and adjusted interfund transfers based on actual expenses from 2022, including admin overhead, IT fleet, and facilities. So when we were putting together the 2324 budget, we only had 2021 actuals. We didn't have the full year of 2022. So this mid biennial adjustment allowed us to have the full 2022 expenses and we could true up all those interfund transfers. And then we did a trip of costs associated with debt service for the municipal campus now that we have the amortization schedule. Excuse me. All right, next slide, please. So now this is kind of the categories that we talked a little bit about. This first category is completely grant funded and it is one time, so only impacting 2024. However, this is really just a reallocation of grant funds received that were already approved by council, but this was after the 2324 biennial budget was adopted. This includes contract positions for peer outreach specialists, community court service specialist, co-response program, collaborative case management software, human service training and professional services, human services intern, and a human services coordinator out of class pay. This total request is $369,450, but once again, it is all completely grant funded. Next slide, please. These next items are one-time requests for the 2324 mid biennial budget adjustment. They come out of the general fund and partially out of the IT fund as well, and this is all professional services. AWC budget training for directors. This is something that was included in the 2020 budget, but due to the pandemic, obviously we couldn't go and have the directors attend this AWC budget training. Now that we have available resources within the general fund, the proposal is to bring this back for 2024, so we have some new directors that could benefit from this. The enterprise resource planning analysis, this is something that came out of the IT strategic plan, and it's a recommendation to have completed. Our system currently right now is just over 20 years old, and so there is a desire to do this analysis to see what the potential resources could be and how much the cost might be before the 2526 budget, so we can have that information for council. And then the last item that's on here is the communications contract extension. It was a strategic decision just to do a one-year contract with our communications contract provider in '23. We wanted to make sure that we got value for what we were paying towards. Staff and the mayor feel like we are getting that value, and so there's a desire to continue this contract into 2024. So for the one-time request, the total request is $233,000, and this is going to be funded using one-time revenue sources, including increased construction sales tax.
Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
I don't know. I know Mr. Worthing has been working directly with the contractor, but I don't know if they're doing items directly related to what's going on in the new building.
And before we continue, just let the record show that Councilmember Hanford entered chambers at 7:07 PM. Good evening. Any other questions, and then we'll continue on this. Go ahead.
All right. So the last slide here is request for ongoing. These are general fund staff requests. These are not new ads whatsoever. These are current employees, rather just an adjustment based on the work that those employees are completing now. So the request is for the city clerk adjust to the manager pay band, a reclass of the parks planning manager and finance manager to assistant directors in their respective departments, and then a reclass of the finance technician to the accountant. This total request is $68,879 and is funded using ongoing revenue source, which is the increase in property tax due to new construction, which adds into the base property tax collection each year. And next slide. So just a recap on the next steps. Tonight was our first public hearing. The 24th will be our second public hearing and first reading for the budget and property tax ordinances. And then on November 14th, we have the proposed adoption of the budget and property tax ordinances. And Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
All right, thank you. Do any council members have any clarifying questions of staff before we go to the podium for public comment? All right. At this time, I'll ask if there are any members of the public or council members who wish to speak on this matter. Unless the council wishes to impose a different limitation, there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Your time will begin after you introduce yourself and provide your area of residence or association with the city of Monroe. Please be respectful of all speakers and the hearing procedure itself. Please also note that this hearing is an opportunity for you to address the city council. It is not intended to be a question and answer session. Do we have anybody who's signed in to speak? Is there anybody here in person that would like to speak this evening? Is there anybody online that would like to speak? If so, please hit star nine if you're on the phone or hit your raise hand icon if you're in Zoom. Okay. There is nobody that has come forward to speak this evening. Do any council members have any additional questions of staff at this time? Okay. We are going to continue the public hearing, correct? Because the second public hearing will be on October 24th. Okay, great. So we are now closing this public hearing unless there is objection, noting that there will be another opportunity for public comment on October 24th. I see staff is good with that, too. All right. The, this is the conclusion of the public hearing. Unless there are objections, there were none. This hearing is now closed, and I now go on to the next side of the agenda. Thank you, everybody. The next item on the agenda is public comments. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. If you'd like to speak this evening, please wave your hands in the back or hit star nine if you're on the phone or hit your raise hand icon if you're in Zoom. All right, seeing nobody interested in speaking this evening, we're going to go ahead and move on to discussion items. This is item six, 6.1 specifically. This is a 2022, the 202022 Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee Report on Public Records with Sherri Simonson. Someone invite Sherri forward. Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, council. First, I just want to acknowledge Jody Wykoff. It was boss's day yesterday, and she's been a great addition to the city. And I also like to make sure you're aware that Patricia Pendry and Ryan Irving are here from the police department. So if you have any questions, there'd be available. So last year, we kind of gave you a very high level overview of the J-Lark and some of the work that we're doing here at the city. So this year, we wanted to kind of dial down a little bit and get a little bit more into the details. J-Lark is a Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee that started in 2017. The city has been reporting since then. We only did a partial year in 2017, but again, we've been contributing ever since then. So the statistics that we got from 2021 were a little bit interesting. We had 215 agencies with 357,000 records requests, 100 million spent, 1.3 million hours. And then, as you can see, there was 7.2 million spent in litigation, which is a 40% increase from last year. And so in our next slide, we kind of wanted to show you just some of what those costs are to other neighboring cities and agencies and school districts for having litigation, preparing for the litigation. And you can see some of those numbers are pretty high. So I'm happy to report the city Monroe is not on the list. We did not have any costs associated. So that's work we're really proud of. So our request for this year, we did have a slight increase up to 1268, but we went ahead and put in our numbers for 2023 because we want to kind of let you know we're kind of seeing an increase. So we're at 1218 already, and that's just, we're just middle of October. So we're kind of anticipating we're going to be between 1400 and 1500 by the end of the year if our numbers kind of continue. So here, we just wanted to kind of give you a glimpse of kind of like what the numbers are. It's a little hard to see on the slide, but you know, we'll have anywhere from two to three requests today up to about a week ago, we had 14 requests in one day. So they can be anywhere from an insurance request, wanting copy of a collision report, or it can be a request that takes a city months to years to work on. So you just never know what we're going to get. But that just kind of gives you an idea. And as you can see, the pink is kind of 2023. So we're having a lot of those increases in the numbers there. So we wanted to give you kind of a glimpse of, yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Are we, are we budgeted for this kind of increase in public requests?
Well, I'm happy to report that council was very supportive last year, and one of the things that we did is my position's now full time, so I'm able to help here and help support this process.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. So examples of large requests. So we just took some examples from last year of kind of what it looks like, how much time we can spend on one request, staff costs, and you know, sometimes, you know, requesters abandon requests, but we've still invested a considerable amount of time. And the police department, we wanted to kind of give you an example of a request that's started in 2022, and here we are, 2023, and we're still working on it. So like I said, the requests can be really small and take half an hour, or it can be ongoing and take significant staff time. So here is kind of the number of requests that we see kind of carrying over. And like, if you look at February, for example, in 2021, we had kind of a carryover of 22, and then in 2022, we had 30, and then in 2023, had 50. And what that means by carrying over means we're not able to process the amount of requests in a month to complete all of them that we get in the month. So we're carrying them over from month to month. Now, some are coming in and going out, but the fact that we're having to carry over a larger number, what that tells me is that we are spending a lot more time, you know, locating records, reading records, reviewing records, you know, getting records to our city attorney for review. So it's a little bit more complex that we're seeing. So that's kind of one of the things that we wanted to point out there. Okay, so here we have kind of a glimpse of month to month, and as you can see, the orange in the background, that's 2023. And in comparison to '21, there's quite a bit of growth that we're continuing to see. And that's a good thing because that means citizens know that they can reach out to us and access the things that they need, and so we're happy to be able to help support that process. So request by department. Here, we kind of have our comparison. I'm not sure why it's not showing all the way up on the slide. But we kind of broke down all the requests by department, and you'll see that number doesn't match our total number for the year because some requests are multi-departmental. So Patricia Pendry and I probably speak, if not once a day, multiple times a day, working on requests together because they're police records, they're city hall records, it could be community development, it could be parks, public works, finance, HR, it could be all of those at the same time. So that's why we thought it was really important for you to kind of see what the departments are up against. We also noticed some increase in finance and HR, so that was something else we wanted to point out. Yeah, it's looking interesting. That's right. So I know Councilmember Gamble, last year, you were kind of interested in kind of like who are requesters and what are, whatever we're working with. So I kind of took a peek at what our last two years have, and so here's kind of some percentages of who our requesters are. So we have individuals, we have insurers, we have other government agencies, and that could be CPS or TSHS. We have organizations, which are like companies. We have law firms, media inmates, current informants, and then we have anonymous. See, I have a.
Councilmember Gamble.
No, I appreciate it. And one of the things we talked about, too, on this one is, do we, do we track like our unique requests? Like, when I look at like an individual, that's 44%, but of that 44%, is it, is it disparate? You know, is there individuals that are consistently requesting over and over and over?
So we do, we do have routine requesters, and what we see there are people who ask for, we want all the collision reports from this period to this period, and they come back with those requests every single month. But the Public Records Act is inclusive to not us not to consider who the requestor is and to be as transparent as possible.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
Where I'm going with that is if we know that someone is going to be requesting on a regular basis the same stuff, is there, is there things that we could be doing on the, on the front end, or maybe we're already?
So we do try to publish as much as we can. So when we do get requests, we refer people back to those requests, so we don't have to redo the work. So we'll say, hey, here's the request that you made. If you go here, this is a link, and you can get that same information. A lot of times, though, we want to be careful about putting out private information, you know, on the public viewpoint. But if we had an incident where we had lots of media attention, lots of people asking for things, we would publicly face those records. So we would have those available to people right away.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking more along the lines of the type of information that they're constantly requesting, or if that is a consistent over and over again, or we proactively putting our records in a way so that's just an easy pivot because you know they're going to ask for it.
Yeah, and that would be the collision reports. That's the thing that we seem to see, the thing where we have routine requests for those, and we do publish those.
Okay.
So we can refer those people to those requests.
Okay. Is that, that's really the only one that is a consistent?
That would be the pretty most of the consistent, yes.
Thanks.
Yeah, of course.
Any other questions before we continue? Councilmember Kenny?
Hi there. One quick question I had when I was looking through this is the denials of requests, partially denied or redacted, and 39 requests were abandoned. So I was just curious, I know you can't go into great detail, but I'm curious about how you determine abandoning a request or partially deny a request?
Partially denying would be if we had, for example, collision report, we do not release, re-release driver's license. So every collision report that leaves the city, we have to redact the driver's license. If we have social security numbers, any of those kinds of records, we have to take that out before we put it out onto public facing. So that's where that partially redaction comes in. We also might have records that have attorney-client privilege, juvenile records. There's lots of reasons why we have it, but you know, it's pretty much kind of, it's something we have to look at on a case-by-case basis. And abandoned request would be, sometimes we ask people, we're not understanding exactly what they're looking for, so we'll ask some clarifying questions, and then they don't answer. And so we're kind of left having to close it because we, they've abandoned what we call abandoned the request. They just don't further interact with us. We try calling, sending letters, mailing, and we just don't hear back. So at that point, we give them 30 days, and then we abandon. Yes.
Any other questions?
Yes. So one of the things we're really proud of is, you know, our big number there, that 885, that means that we got records to people who were asking in less than five days. So we feel that's a really good number. So that means that there's a smaller percentage of ones that are complex, that take lots of review. You know, if we're doing an email review, we have to open every attachment, look at every record, make sure there's nothing that we have to redact. So again, primarily, our records are going out in less than five days. And again, Councilmember Gamble, you know, our goal is to, whatever we can do to kind of push things out, building permits, or you know, any of those records, that's our long-term goal, is to continually to push information so citizens can look on the website and get the information. So our average cost, we did have a slight increase from '21 to '22 of 245, 48. And then, as you can see, the cost recovered, we did get a little bit of an increase there from year to '21 to '22. So, yes. Okay. So how are requests fulfilled? This is one of the metrics that we report to the state. So as you can see, a large percent is electronic, and that's why our grant that we had last year is going to be significantly beneficial to the city because all those records are now electronic. Before, staff would have to go out to the archives, pull the records, bring them back into the building, scan them, bring them back out to the archives. And now we have almost 300,000 pages that we've got scanned and are all digital. So huge, huge increase in cost savings there, I think. So we're excited about that. So our city does have a policy where we categorize requests, and the And the purpose of this is so when we tell requesters, it's going to take us a while to get to your request because of what category you're in and what you've requested and the number of records. So here you have kind of a glimpse of what we consider records to be five days or less. That was at 1,000. And then, you know, five to 30 days, 160. And then, as you can see, as it gets down, the numbers get smaller and smaller. Even though that category four is only 11, that can be a very, very large commitment from staff to manage those 11 requests.
So remember Ultra.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm looking at the, the requests that were done in the 953 that were electronically fulfilled. And wait, 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 hold on. There was a question that popped up in my head. Let me just review here real quick. Okay, 885 were closed within five days. Oh, but the category one is like over a thousand of them. Does that mean that just people abandoned that remainder of 200 and something? Or is it, math is not my forte? Or did those just get rolled over and they took longer?
So there is a rollover element involved in the numbers. And also, we do have a small amount of air because it is staff. The staff are the ones that are inputting those categories. So that's why you might see a difference in the numbers.
I was just interested because you know, customer service is my life and you're doing an excellent job. I just wanted to know how that happens.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Okay, so here is our metric where we kind of estimate what we're spending staff time conversationally, review software. And then we have a 2.5 overhead rate. And that overhead rate is for IT support, copier, paper, all the things that it takes to kind of support the process. We did outline kind of some of the things that we felt contributed to our increase from last, from 2021 to 22. City Clerk Wyckoff and Patricia Pendry were fairly new. And now they're, they're in the trenches with the rest of us working on these requests. So we did do an increase of their staff time. The, we had to add the police administrative assistant because of all the collision reports that are coming in requests. We added a 20% of staff time to handle those. We also added staff time for community development. Let's see here, it was finance and human resources because we saw significant increases in their requests. So we went ahead and included some staff time for there. And then we did have an increase in some legal fees. Records management. So this is where we kind of support our records that we have. And we did have also saw an increase here. And I am going to tell you that in 2023, you're also going to see some increases both in public records and in records management. Because in public records, we only encounter the last quarter because all the officers got body cameras. So those costs are going to increase next year because we're going to have a full year's worth. And we're also going to have some increases in records management because we had dedicated staff days this past year where we were working on records. So we're going to somehow incorporate some percentages to include that. But you know, we had staff work for our grant preparation, so we included some extra staff time there. We had another, the police department, they spent two hours, all their staff spent two hours a week working on records management, trying to get our records organized and up to date with destruction. So yeah, we had some really exciting projects this year, so. Body cameras. So again, we only had a little, we've had a body camera program for several years. But now that all the officers are wearing them, we're going to see some increased staff time here. The reductions, well, similar to paper, they are more complex. So an officer's body camera could capture their data, mobile data computer, that has to be redacted. If they go into the hospital, that has to be redacted. If they go into somebody's home, that has to be redacted. Those elements are all moving, people are moving, computers, everything's moving and staff have to follow that around. So they, the reduction is definitely more complex and it is definitely more time consuming. So again, we'll see some increased costs with software, data storage and the reduction modules. So highlights, again, I kind of touched a little bit. We had a very successful grant of almost $50,000 from the state. And we were able to, almost 300,000 pages that we got digitized, so it was really exciting. We are continuing to do all of our training. I'm happy to report, I was at a training with many other agencies and we were one of the only agencies there that train every single staff when they come in. We train seasonals, interns, everyone walking in, we kind of introduce them to public records, to records management and the importance of it. We are continuing to manage as much as we can electronically, push out things, handle everything electronically. And again, we've got body cameras and we did an inventory of our paper records. So we kind of have a better idea, which is why we found that very interesting thing that Jody brought last week of the building. So those were, it was a really fun process that we went through to kind of establish that. And then we are continuing, so we have some goals for next year of continuing to get records over to the state that are eligible to go to the state. We're going to prepare for that increase in records requests that we're, you know, we're working with staff training. We have our records liaison meetings and that's where we work and train staff on the things that we're learning. We are looking for ways again to continue to push out records as easy, you know, for citizens to access, residents to access. And then we're working, we have draft retention, public records policy. We're going to update and we're going to do an email policy and a records management policy. So those are some things that we have. We're going to evaluate SharePoint versus Laserfish and Smarsh versus Microsoft discovery. So we're always looking for ways to save money. So those are part of our evaluation. So those are things we're working on for next year and currently too, right now we're working on them. Is there any questions?
Any other questions? Could that council member Scarborough?
No question, but a comment. Thank, thank you and your staff, police department and all those people that have to manage this portion of what we do as a city or a police department to accommodate the public's need to know.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. I'm looking at motion, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Foulter.
You saw me do that.
You're reaching for your button.
Exactly. I moved to approve the consent agenda as provided in the packet.
Have motion from council member Folter, a second from council member in for, for the requested action to approve the consent agenda as shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none. I'll call for the vote, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item eight. This is new business, item 8.1, the 2024-2029 Capital Facilities Plan Presentation with Director Roberts. Good evening.
Evening, Mayor. Hello, everybody. Excuse me. Hang on. Okay, good. You're going to start that presentation. That's right. Perfect, I'm all dialed it. You guys are in for a show. All right, the 2024 through 2029 Capital Facilities Plan Update, next slide please. So the Capital Facilities Plan is guided by Imagine Monroe, which is a formalized direction for the Monroe community. Themes from Imagine Monroe seek to guide the projects that are in the Capital Facilities Plan, as well as the Comprehensive Plan, which we'll touch on in a minute. So that includes the healthy, natural and built environment, sustaining and improving regional connections, a lively center, community centered infrastructure and a safe place for all. Next slide, please. That's all right, just, you know, watch the changes, we'll keep up together. So goals and policies detailed in the 2015 Comprehensive Plan, which many on this council had a part in adopting, just kind of touching on these lightly. They include improving coordination between service sectors, supporting infill development, infrastructure development to support economic activities and objectives, maintaining level of service standards, coordinating with regional agencies to get projects done, addressing stormwater, natural resources and sustainability goals, as well as supporting our transportation needs, including trails and walkability. Next slide. So the regulatory framework for the Capital Facilities Plan obviously starts with the Washington State Growth Management Act. The 2015 Comprehensive Plan is required as a part of the Growth Management Act. And then as we move a little bit lower level into chapter 22 of our municipal code, which deals with development regulations, Unified Development Code, I think is what it's called. Within there then, changes to this plan or program, which generally revolve around budgetary or cost increases. The projects usually don't get less expensive over time, councils aware of that. Also affect fees that development pays. So if, if a council, if a project increases in cost, fees go up accordingly, it increases the cost of development. That's why we go through this process annually. Next slide, please. So then implementing the goals and policies as well as the plan, looking at them together on the left-hand side there. You've got the capital facilities element of the Comprehensive Plan and then the more granular part, like I said, the transportation plan, the utilities plans, all three of them, and the parks and rec open space plan. Next slide, please, Jody. And for recent plan updates, we will go to Mr. Swanson.
Great, thank you. So, so the city recently adopted the, or updated the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan back in 2022. And this is accompanied amendment to chapter seven of the city's comprehensive plan. And why we had to do that is to bring it in alignment with the adopted PROS Plan, specifically maps and future calculations. And then also in the PROS Plan, they included a really well laid out cost matrix of future improvements, as well as maintaining our existing infrastructure.
Okay, moving on. Where are we in the development approval process? It's kind of hard to read from here, but I guess I can look at this one. So the mayor develops the recommended budget adjustment in this year and capital plan update. We go visit planning commission twice, which we've done. And we collect a public comment at a public hearing, which we've also done, there was no public comment. That's required by GMA and local code. And then we also have a secret review process. We've moved through there. We visited with the P3 Committee, City Council back in August, I suppose. It was mid to late August. And then now we're kind of, we're at the presentation of the mayor's recommended budget adjustment for council consideration. And tonight was the first public hearing for public comment. Couple more steps to go, but this is going to work right along with the budget through the council process. So you see those things side by side as we go forward. 2024 project summaries. So we've got 39 projects going, anywhere from pre-designed to closeout. Something I like to talk to the council about when we're bringing up what it takes to get a project done from, I think, cradle to grave, as it were. We basically start sometimes two years in advance of when a project actually occurs in the community. And it often takes a year to two years in order to close that project out completely. So an example for this year would be Madison. That project's been done for quite some time. In fact, I think it's been a summer and then we're now into the fall, so a year and a little bit. We're still not completely closed out on that project. We still have things that we have to do administratively in order to bring that to completion. We're looking at 27 and some change in planned expenditures this year, expenditures this year from the general fund and the utilities combined. This next slide here has the, maybe, has the each funds expenditures. You'll see there the large one being the fourth one down the campus. That's looking right around 13,5 for this year coming up because we're going to be doing a construction project here very shortly. Turn it back over to Mr. Swanson.
Okay, thanks. So with the, with the 2024 CFP in the spreadsheet, you'll notice a significant portion of that is going towards playground. And then years after that, also going towards playgrounds. Just because development happen, happens in waves and especially in Monroe, Frylands area, even portions of the hill all happened at one time. We also have the infrastructure that needs to be replaced almost at the same time too. So we'll be dedicating a lot of time and resources towards replacing older playgrounds that we have up there. All of them, we still do, you know, weekly inspections on them and more detailed ones on a monthly basis. They're still functional and safe, but they are at the end of their lifespan. So we'll be focusing a lot of time and effort on that. The public Plaza Festival Lot right now, that's actually in feasibility for the purchase of the land. We're going through our kind of environmental review. And then after that, moving towards looking at actually developing that, those areas out. The Master Trails Plan, we kicked off a few months ago for the public input. And then that will, once it's done, it's scheduled to be adopted with the large comp plan update that's happening in 2024 and incorporated into the Comprehensive Plan. And then that document will essentially be able to inform us on both prior twice prioritizing the repair of our existing trail system and planning for new future trial systems, both within the city and then our future urban growth areas as the city expands.
Okay. Good evening, council. I'm going to just highlight some of our public works projects that we have for 2024. First one is our crosswalk, safety improvements along Frylands Boulevard, a couple of locations along the Lake Pile Trail and the YMCA Crossing and the Frylands Boulevard and 146. These beacons notify pedestrians in the area and will improve our, our pedestrian safety along the Frylands. Slide. The Dickinson Utility Replacement Project. This was originally identified in our current utility systems plan with storm deficiencies, localized areas of water ponding during storm events. Project budget of 1.81 million dollars. This will resolve the drainage issues at Dickinson and West Columbia and Dickinson and their main street. This includes upgrades to age water storm systems. And again, this project will be scheduled for the spring of construction in 24. Slide. The municipal campus construction with a budget of $13 million. I believe we opened bids on Thursday, so that's an exciting milestone for this project. Construction in 23 and into 2024. Funding through current bonding capacity and $1.2 million in grants for this project originated with the 2008 campus master plan. Excellent. And the annual TVD road maintenance, project budget of 2.54 million dollars. Includes, I think I have a typo here, it's 700K TIB grant for Blueberry Lane and Frylands Boulevard. So that's $700,000 in grant money for those projects. The TBD projects are funded through the Transportation Board District with a 0.02% sales tax. That's a voter approved sales tax, includes resurfaces, existing roadways using grind and overlay process. It upgrades sidewalk ramps as necessary to meet federal ADA compliance and citywide annual pavement striping and program included. Is there any questions regarding the projects?
Any questions, council? Thank you. Director Roberts, is that good? All right. Any other questions for Director Roberts or staff?
No other guest speakers, bring up.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, council member reports, we'll go ahead and start here on this end. Councilmember gamble.
Yeah, so attended the football game on Friday. I know we talked about that last week. So three, three-time 3A West Coast South champs, 18 straight regular season wins. It's been a lot of fun to watch, see the town come out. It's homecoming this week, if you didn't know. So there'll be, it's the rivalry between Snohomish and Monroe. I'll be there, hope to see a bunch of folks up there as what did I see was like the 100th or 115th or, I don't know, it's been going on since 1911 or something like that. So anyway, rich history.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Foulter.
Lots of interactions, but nothing to report.
Thank you, council member Kenny.
Thank you, council member Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to commend Director Roberts on his response to the email that we received about of the truck going through their arterial roads there. And appreciated your response, it was very well written. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fisher. Thank you, Councilmember Scarborough.
Yeah, to trailer on Kevin's report, thank you also to the police department for doing their share of finding out what trucks are going through there by license and getting those people to try and stop. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item that we have then is staff and department reports. I'm going to invite Mr. President to come forward. Oh, I'm sorry, was there a hand up? Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, council. Your Economic Development Report is in your packet. A couple of things I want to highlight on there. It's time again for our annual survey. The 2022 survey is included in the packet along with the annual report, if you would like to review it. One thing that is a little bit different this year is it will not be joined with the branding survey because we've already done that. So it will be standalone information. And Eda really wanted to take the information that they've gathered through their kind of field business. take the information that they've gathered through their kind of field visits and what some business owners had to say to gain quantitative and qualitative data. So there might be some different questions this year, but trying to make sure that it's something that is reaching the needs of the community. Um, in addition to that, uh, we did our final uh, field trip to the North Kelsey US two area. Uh, that was great. We got to meet with a lot of business owners as well as property owners and business leaders. And one thing that's great that came out of that is they were hoping to find something that was maybe quarterly where they could promote it as a business district to have a coffee chat or something like that, so that board members could sit down. Some business owners felt that they uh, weren't sure how to come to a EDAB meeting, even though it's out there. We invited them to always come, so maybe just meeting them where they are. They thought that would be great to have coffee and just be able to sit down if they had concerns. So that's something that uh, we are now going to work on scheduling. A couple of script things. Uh, Mr. Patrick Doherty, who will be our new economic development advisor, is now on board and he's been working with James Palmer as well as the EDAB uh, to help. Uh, he's brought in a lot of great ideas. He also brought a lot of great surveys from some other municipalities that he's worked with. So hopefully we can glean from those and um, make some advancements in that. Uh, finally, another thing is kind of some kudos. Uh, the Snow and Sky Adventure Guide that we have every year, our park staff worked hard and got a grant for that from Snohomish County for thirty thousand dollars. So that should cover the costs of publishing as well as distribution for next year. And a key highlight on that, it was the only print material to receive full high marks as well as comments that it was their favorite magazine. So kudos to our parks department for the work that Katie and McKenna do on that because I know it's a big lift for them. So. And finally, the Monroe Business Newsletter for September is in your packet. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Um, any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, no, no questions, but I just wanted to let, uh, you know, Tyler, it's been privileged to work with you indirectly and uh, having your reports and really appreciate your service in our city. Uh, we will miss you, but I wish you the very best.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kenny?
I echo that sentiment. I had a couple of questions. Um, I noticed there are two vacancies on the board for, is it a board? Economic Development Advisory Board. Um, how do we go about trying to find people to fill those spots?
Well, the, the answer to that is the same way that we would every board commission. So we post it in all of our places. We put it in the mayor's newsletter. We post it on the website as vacancies. But in the EDAB, what we try and do is we try and use the business community partners or people that we meet at other meetings and say, hey, are you interested in doing this? So a little bit of a grassroots approach for that one, because oftentimes those members meet at things like Rotary or or other events. So that is how we uh, did uh, get uh, Mr. James Raina, who is our newest member. So it's kind of a grassroots approach, but also with the regular methods of putting it in all of the newsletters or just uh, the mineral this week, things along those lines.
Right. Is there a particular business type that you feel would be really advantageous to have on the board? Like, should we be looking for a certain type of business person in our dealings in the city or with residents?
Uh, probably the least represented area would be the industrial park area. Uh, if council remember, we kind of split into three key sections of the city, the industrial park, the historic downtown, as well as the uh, North Kelsey US two corridor. So we would be light on the industrial area. We only have one member from the industrial area.
Great. Good to know. And last but not least, I had an opportunity to meet Patrick uh, at the Chamber Luncheon and James Palmer was there and talked a little bit about um, what's going on and he is, it's really nice to meet him. Seemed like a very competent person and I actually um, did look at his materials that were in council packet and really uh, researched him a little bit and I think he's going to be a wonderful addition. So.
He's been a great addition so far, and I know he had mentioned that he wants to come speak to council in the future. So I'm not sure exactly.
Yeah, he did mention that to me.
That is one of his plans.
Yes. So yes, good work and we will miss you.
Thank you very much.
Anything else from council? Okay.
Thanks.
Tyler, um, thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
And um, I, I think you're going to have a great time where you're going. Uh, it's a great growth opportunity. And uh, I've really enjoyed working with you for so many years. So I'm going to miss having you here on our staff, but you're going to be doing great things in our valley. And uh, I know that we'll still be interacting Monroe and the next place you're going um, into the future.
For sure. I'm not going very far away.
No, you're not. So I'm just not saying it on the, on the record because I'm trying to maintain some degree privacy here for you. Um, but, but really, I've really enjoyed working with you and I'm going to miss having you on our staff.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We'll see. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda then is mayor and administrative reports. We'll just start off the city, city administrator report extended agenda. Uh, Mr. Wilson?
Hi, Jody.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I don't have it memorized. Don't let me surprise you. Hi. Uh, so next week, we do not have a P three committee meeting for uh, at six. So you've got that night, that part of the night off. We do have a regular business meeting started at seven. Uh, proclamation for kindness week, consent agenda, paying some bills, paying some people some minutes. Uh, public hearing again for the twenty three, twenty four budget mid by end adjustment and twenty twenty four property tax by Mr. Greg. Uh, and add rules of order doc. No, oh. Got it. Note to self. Uh, final action, nothing on there. We do have a new business ordinance for the twenty three, twenty four budget mid by name adjusted, adjustment and a twenty four, twenty twenty four property tax ordinance, capital facilities plan by Robert Swanson and possibly maybe again um, and award bid city hall renovation project time by project by Mr. Jordan Otto and ordinance updating park impact fees first reading by Ben Swanson and an ordinance amending code for planning commission meeting locations only by clerk Wyckoff. And we'll have some reports, H R I T, community development, public works, police, human services. We'll let all of it, everybody. Ten thirty, we will uh, October thirtieth, we will have a city council joint workshop with Parks Planning Commission, EDAB and CHESAB that will be at our old campus and quick discussion of the comprehensive plan, regulatory overview. And aren't we before that having a recognition?
We're, yes.
Right? That will start at six thirty. So boards and commissions recognition, social, I believe you call it.
Social.
Correct? Yeah. Yeah.
And I'm going to strongly encourage that everybody be there in person that can make it. We are encouraging all the planning commission, board members, uh, et cetera, to be there as well. Um, we will have not just sweet things, but also savory things to eat. So if you don't get a chance to eat dinner or you just want seconds, um, there will be an opportunity to have something other than something sweet and sugary. And uh, like I've said before, we're encouraging all of the boards and commission members to be there. I think it's important we get together uh, from time to time, especially when we're working in a hybrid environment. So um, I look forward to all of you being there, um, who are able to be there because I know that at least one of you is not going to be able to make it. Um, anything else? Oh, yeah. I, a flag was going up. Yes, Councilmember Kenny? That's correct. It is a Monday. We decided that we would not do this on October thirty first, which is Halloween.
It should say Monday.
You're right. It should say Monday, October thirtieth. Thank you. I heard ten thirty, but I didn't hear the Monday to Tuesday. All right. All right.
And the seventh is canceled because it's election.
All right. Any questions about the extended agenda? All right, thank you. Go ahead. Next report? It's the administrative report.
Uh, we already spoke about this one. Uh, boards and commissions committee recognition, social Monday, October thirtieth at six thirty in the Monroe Coordination Center and then the joint meeting following with boards and commissions, October thirtieth at seven.
All right, any questions? All right, thank you. Uh, mayor's report, um, just uh, had a meeting this evening to talk with uh, somebody about extension of sewer into the unincorporated urban growth area. Just reminded them about what our uh, laws say that they would need to annex. If you've got any questions about that, you can certainly meet with me offline. Um, the entity understood that and and will be looking at alternatives. Uh, the other thing, um, this is something of interest is that a local news network will be uh, coming in and doing an interview around the uh, recovery program uh, that we are uh, doing the scholarship beds here in Monroe for people who have chemical dependence dependency, but don't have health insurance. Um, so uh, chemical dependency issues that would like to seek treatment, but just don't have medical insurance. And so um, that's a good thing to hear that the, we're being recognized for filling a gap in services uh, and that um, one of the local news networks will be coming out to to cover that. So that'll be on Thursday. I don't know when it's going to air or anything like that, but I just wanted council to be aware uh, that um, you may see something about that. Rachel Adams may be there to speak uh, as well as me and then uh, one or two of our partners and somebody who may have uh, gone through the program. So a lot of times when these interviews happen, you, you hear different things and then you don't always know which, you know, where they end up going with the story, but um, we, we understand that they want to come out and talk about some of the good things that you all have invested in. So thank you. And I don't think I have anything else. Does anybody have any questions for me under the mayor's report? All right, unless there's objection, uh, we are adjourned. All right, we're adjourned at seven fifty.